Okay, then I will call the meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Kransky are you in present? Groko is absent tonight. Kufal?
Present.
Padilla?
Present.
Rose?
Present.
And Eaker.
Here.
Okay, tonight we have just a minor change to the agenda under Department and Committee Reports and Action Items. We're just gonna do the library first because Michelle has another commitment to get to. So we'll just put 9G first thing under that, under number nine. Any other changes?
No.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion from Eaker, do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Padilla, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? Do we have any citizens here that would like to speak tonight? Okay, we'll move on to council members, any updates? And how about city staff? None? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda and I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion from Eaker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal, any further, any discussion or questions about the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. No public hearings tonight under communication requests and petitions. There was a few things going on with cancer fighters fundraisers, newsletter, some things going on at the library and at Emmanuel Lutheran Church. Next, we'll move to our Department and Committee Reports and Action Items and we will start with our new library director, Michelle. And you can come up to the podium and introduce yourself for those who haven't met you yet and give us some library news.
Yes, hi, my name is Michelle Walz, I am the library director. I live in Winthrop with my husband. Just a few things that are going on in the library. We have started our adult winter reading challenge that will go until the end of February. We have story time on Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. That's been going really well. On March 6th, we have painting with Nancy. That is a free class due to the ACHF grant. But you will need to sign up for the, there are limited spaces. March 18th, we have a meal planning event coming up for that one. April 5th, we have a sourdough class. Again, that is also an ACHF grant, so that'll be free to our patrons. Again, you will also have to sign up for that, limited space. April 6th through the 12th is National Library Week, so I have some fun things to do for that week. And one of our guest speakers is Dan Piaski. I don't know if you guys know him. He will be coming and talking on the archaeological discoveries that pertain to the Bible. And then just working on summer reading program. And then again, if you haven't, go over to our Facebook page, that's the Gaylord Public Library. Like our page because I post all of our stuff on there. You can also go to gaylordmnlibrary.org. My calendar is up there as well. Other things are in the newspaper, so you'll be able to find out about all of that stuff there, so yeah, that's the gist.
Sounds like a lot of good programming, so thank you.
You're welcome. Which items? Let's see, so Sarita has decided to resign. I think you guys have, do you have the letter in the board packet?
Yes.
Yes, so she has decided to resign. And then Karen Johnson has decided to join the library board. And so that is all, yeah.
Then we'll, we need a motion to accept Sarita Palacios resignation from the library board effective February 1st, 2025. So we have a motion from Eaker, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Kufal, any discussion? Let's take a moment to thank Sarita for serving on the library board and wish her the best. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next then, we will approve, we need a motion to approve Karen Johnson's appointment to the library board. We have a motion by Padilla, seconded by Eaker, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we will go, move to 9C, Public Works Department. Ty will give us some updates.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First, I just want to provide a eye and eye update. As of the council meeting, the televising should be finished. I did talk to Sean from Empire last week and he said they had about a day and a half left. Now we'll be just waiting on the final report. I'll go through that when I get it and I'll make a, I'll present that to council when it's finished and see what we come up with, so. The second thing I have is to purchase a new lift station pump. As part of our capital replacement program. This new pump purchase will be number four of the five total purchases. Just for some background, in the fall of 2020, we decided to replace all the aging flight pumps in our lift stations. The old pumps were 20 horse and 25. And we decided we'd switch all of them over to the same 25 horse pump. We did not purchase a pump last year and 2026 will be the final purchase for a new pump. It'll be the last one. The cost for the pump this year is $31,962.60. This includes the pump, new relay, new guide rail, and adapter and installation. And we have been using a loner bracket from Minnesota Pump. So we need to purchase a new one and give the loner back. We have $30,000 scheduled from the capital replacement program to pay for this. And the rest will be paid through the sewer budget line 400. Just asking council to approve that purchase.
So we need a motion to approve the purchase of a new lift station pump at a cost not to exceed $31,962.60.
So moved.
Motion from Rose, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Padilla, any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is move on to manholes.
Yeah, the third thing I have is three manholes on the west of 10th Street out in the field. They were raised up, we raised them up in 2016 hoping the equipment wouldn't hit them. They keep hitting them every once in a while and now there's a big hole in one of them. So we've done this in a couple different places and in fields where we've actually, we bury them two to three feet deep. Just for example, there's some in the field southeast of the Wolverine Meadows apartment buildings. And in the field east of South Prairie Park, those were buried when they were originally put in. Right now, they're kinda, they're exposed to water infiltration because they get knocked off and they get pushed back, so they're not sealed at all. So we'd like to get those buried. There's actually two more out there that will need buried in the future, but those haven't been hit yet. So we got a cost from Jerpy to bury those three manholes, take the top cone off and bury them. Total cost for that was $3,874. And that would come out of the sewer line budget, line 400 also.
I have a question, Ty.
Yep.
Those, those manhole covers are all marked, aren't they, on the field?
Oh yeah, they got flags around them and
So the farmer just keeps hitting them?
Well, whoever's the operators are, they hit them with the cultivator or whatever.
There's some sort of liability when they just keep
Oh, they pay for it.
They do pay, so they're gonna pay for it?
Yeah, to get it hooked, to get them attached back up if they knock them down hard enough. But we're just sick of doing it all the time, I guess, and just trying to get them out of the way, so. And we do have a, we, Steve and I looked it up, we do have a 50-foot permanent easement out there for those two, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Does Jerpy's fix it usually and send a bill?
Jerpy or Jewel did it last one time and Jerpy's done it.
And they've been paying it?
Yeah, we just send, usually send them a bill and
It kinda sucks that we have to bury them because a farmer keeps hitting them. Because you kinda wanna have access to them. I mean, if you ever have to jet them or anything else.
Right.
I mean, as an operator, I like having access to it.
Right.
And if we have to bury them because somebody else keeps hitting it. Especially at our own expense.
Right.
How's that work for the jet, how does that change the jetting when you bury them?
You can't see it, yeah.
Basically, if you, I mean, Ty could probably test it too. If you'd have an issue, you'd have to dig it back up again if you know that's where it's at.
Right.
I mean, to my knowledge, I don't think we've had one out there, but
The only thing nice about that sewer line out there, it's all plastic, so it's new enough, it's not in danger of collapse or anything, so that's one good thing about that.
The chances of having to dig it up are
Slim, yeah. We've, like I said, the ones that are over by Wolverine Meadows and the ones east of East Prairie Park, they've never been dug up, so.
I guess I'd rather not see them get buried, but
What's the alternative? I mean, any ideas?
Keep sending a bill when you hit them. Add a fee on it. I mean, if you, if XL Energy, you know, if I'd be digging a hole and I'd hit their power lane or a gas lane, I'd get a bill.
Right.
It's just surprising that they keep hitting it.
Well, no, I mean, they're a good size out there too, it's not like you can't see them.
Yeah, they're two, three feet out of the ground.
Put a big 15-foot tall flag on them, I guess.
We had those too.
With a beacon, maybe.
Yeah, those big tall fiberglass flags we've stuck out there. It doesn't matter.
What's everyone else's thoughts? Would like to see them not buried?
I think that Leighton's got experience in that area. Listen to what he has to say when he does this for a living.
I mean, they both got experience, so these are the guys they have to deal with. So I mean, if they're comfortable with The only thing, like you said, then that's, if you'd ever have to dig it up for some reason, that's gonna be on our city's expense.
Right.
I'll make a motion not to.
Yeah, pardon me, you actually don't have to make a motion to not accept it. Okay, nevermind.
Yeah, so if the requested action is a motion to approve something, the requested action can just fail for lack of emotion, so that's how it would appear in the minute.
What's your feeling on that?
I'd like to see them buried. Because it seems like every, every year, every other year, we're dealing with this, this would just eliminate the problem.
I guess I can attest, as an operator, I've also had to dig through frost just about a month ago to go look for one too. Because they got buried. And so I guess that's where my opinion comes from. I had to go, it sucks especially in the winter time digging it up, but Obviously, Ty and I both have experience in this, I mean, I'll kinda leave it up to you guys what you wanna do.
Well, the only reason I wanted this is because if this was like the only ones that were getting buried around town that we'd have buried, it'd be a different story, but we have some that have been buried for 25, 30 years now, so.
That have been buried?
Yeah, they were buried when they were installed originally.
And there's been no issues?
No.
So as far as maintaining these ones, I mean, has there been much maintenance out there as far as jetting and things like that over the years?
No.
Nothing at all?
No.
Anyone wanna make a motion to approve burying the manholes?
Well, I will make a motion, I appreciate his input. And Ty's the one that's gonna have to deal with it when they get hit, he's the one that's having to deal with it. And if he's more comfortable with them buried, then I'll make a motion to do so.
So we have a motion from Kufal, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eaker, any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I guess as long as jetting can get done. Every, I mean, every so many years you have to do it in order to prevent yourself from
No, what we should do is jet it before they do any work out there to make sure they are clean, just to
I'm the tiebreaker?
Yes.
I've never had to do this yet. It's a lot of pressure, but I will say aye because I do, I see both sides, I really value everyone's thoughts and opinions on this too. But I agree that it's ultimately Ty's time and energy spent on this, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with his recommendation. Okay?
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Well, I guess I, I, I mean, I, ultimately, there's three other guys that worked under the city that ended up fixing it too. I mean, I've fixed it before, but
So next on the agenda, Police Department, we have body worn camera policy updates and Chief Eikin is here to talk with us tonight. So welcome, Charlie.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, this will be less controversial. Yeah, just the one item tonight, well, maybe two, but we'll call it one for now. Just the update to our body worn camera policy. Per Minnesota State statute, Minnesota Post Board, if you have body cameras, you are required mandated to have a policy. I attach our current policy along with the state statute. All the updates are highlighted in yellow and these updates are in line with the current Minnesota State statute regarding our body worn cameras. And it will ensure that we are in compliance with Minnesota State statute. We've had the body cameras now, just an update on them, about a year and a half. Our current company's LensLock. Haven't really had too many issues with them at all. Their customer service is pretty good. Any issues we had, they've fixed it at their own expense pretty much the next day or, you know, pretty immediately. Couple, couple cameras didn't work, we had a new one in the mail the following day, so everything's good. They do a good job picking up video and audio. Ironically, just today, a guy called, he got arrested a few days ago. He claimed that he had a couple laptop computers in the back of his truck and didn't really accuse us of taking them, but he wanted to know where they went and what we did with them. I was able to log into the website, check the camera. Fortunately, the officer did a good job searching the back of the truck, could see it on the camera. There were no computers in there. Called them back to let them know a few hours later and he said, oh, I was just gonna call you, I found them at my parents' house. So they come in very handy, so I'm glad that we have them. As far as the updates go, again, it's in line with state statute. Basically, this all came about, I was talking with another chief in a neighboring city. We're required to get audited every other year. They just did their audit. And this, these were the recommendations that the auditing company made. Again, they're directly in line with the state statute, so if we get ahead of it now, we don't have to go through it in the audit process because it will match state statute.
So we need a motion to approve the updates to the body worn camera policy. Motion from Eaker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Padilla, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything else for
Yeah, so this is just, nothing, nothing to ask for, just a little information for you guys. Basically, the Minnesota Attorney General's Office started a new program this year as far as giving information out about scams for seniors. They'll have a couple, if we want to set something up, they'll have a couple people from their office come down and give a presentation to our senior citizens about common scams and what to look out for. I talked to the sheriff's office, they're, basically, they're gonna take charge of the program going forward from here, but we've kinda all agreed to have it at the courthouse basement sometime in a few months from now and get all the cities involved in the county and put everything out on Facebook so that every senior citizen in the, you know, in the county can hopefully attend if they'd like to and learn about scams, so.
I think would be good. I know some law enforcement Facebook pages that I follow, like, they'll do kind of like the trend, an update on the, you know, just a brief update on the trending scam. And I know a lot of senior citizens are known on social media, but I appreciate those. So I think anything we can do to educate the public, I mean, scammers just keep getting better and better at what they do, so.
More sophisticated in different ways.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yep, and even young people fall for them because their links look legit and stuff, so I think it's a great idea, so. Go for it.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
It's already in the works, you don't need my approval, but I'm glad you're doing it. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fire Department. The only thing on, under them is the city contribution of $5,200 to the Firefighter Relief Association.
That's all we have to report, I guess, that's it.
I know, I'm just flipping through it, so I'm stalling.
Okay.
Could just punch the number.
This is the same amount that we've done in past years.
Right. So we just need a motion to approve the donation of $5,200 to the Gaylord Fire Department Relief Association.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Padilla, seconded by Eaker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carried. Next is unfinished business. Skip down to 10A. We have ordinance number 371, an ordinance amending section 54.171 prohibiting discharges into the sanitary sewer system. This is our second reading.
Yeah, we've, we've gone over this quite a bit. You recall at the last meeting, there was one addition to the list of prohibited discharges and that was for private residential pools. So that was added in there and that's what triggered then another reading of the ordinance. So tonight would be the final reading of this ordinance and then we have a summary publication there as well.
Perfect. So we want a motion to adopt ordinance number 371 prohibiting discharges from some pumps and other sources into the sanitary sewer system.
So moved.
A motion from Rose, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal, any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we need a motion to approve the summary of ordinance number 371 and its publication. A motion from Eaker, do we have a second?
Second.
Who wants that one?
Go on.
Kufal, any
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Tony nominated you, so I think it's Kufal. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to new business, we have ordinance number 373, an ordinance amending the city of Gaylord zoning code.
This is an item coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission. They held public hearings in respect to these proposed changes. These are actually some corrections, so to speak. These were actually things that were talked about when the Planning and Zoning Commission was going through and revising the whole thing before it came to you. And I forgot to incorporate these, so just wanna go back and pick these up at this point in time. Specifically, in reference to accessory buildings, it was, this was an item that the commission did kinda go on and on. They spent a lot of conversations about what are, what size of accessory buildings to allow in different zoning classifications. And they ultimately agreed to that it would be determined by the size of the lot and the amount of impervious surface in that zone that is allowed. So like for the R1, I believe it's 50%, so you can cover your lot with buildings and hard surface up to 50% in the R1 zone. So what we need to do is just remove, what's in the code right now is basically identifying it as 900 square feet in each one of those districts, the A1, the R1, and the R2. And just reference then the accessory structures section of the zoning code. So that's all we're trying to do here. So that's the first one. The next one is in reference to the R2 district, which is our two and multifamily residential district. We only have two residential districts, one is a single family and this R2 is the multiple family, two or multiple. Looking at our zoning map, we looked at that closely and we discovered that there's an awful lot of single family homes currently in our R2 district. And so because of that, we wanna also allow them as a permanent use then in the R2 district as well. Number three, billboards, this will sound familiar. You may recall that we did approve in our signs section of the zoning code, a section just on billboards to allow them in the I2 district as a conditional use. Just simply forgot to list it in the I2 district as a conditional use, so that's all we're doing here. And then lastly, the Shoreland Overlay District. We do identify on our zoning map all the properties that are in the Shoreline Overlay District. They are defined by 1,000 feet away from any properties within 1,000 feet of the high water mark of Lake Titlow or Mud Lake. They're in, they are in the Shoreline Overlay District. The DNR requires that you can only have, if you're in the Shoreline Overlay District, only 25% of your lot area can be covered by impervious surface. We just neglected to put in that. It's, it's not that, you know, if we don't put it in, it's not that we don't have to follow it. It's just better to have it in there, that way it's there for anybody that's in that district that they can see that then. I'd rather have it in there versus trying to explain to them, well, the DNR requires this. All we're doing is matching up with the DNR and we can't go something more. The DNR percentage trumps anything we would do if we wanted to go higher than 25%. So we have to go by the 25%. It's not to say that we can't apply, or a property owner can't apply for variance in the future from that 25%. It is possible to get a variance, but this would be the standard.
Is it 25 feet from the line on your property or how does that, or does it just take away 25?
25% represents the amount of impervious surface. Impervious surface is basically lot coverage. Whether it's a buildings or hard surface, that's your impervious surface. So you've basically totaled up the square footage of all that and determine what's 25% of your lot area and then that determines the maximum impervious that you can have. If that makes sense. So again, we have impervious requirements in, I believe, all of our zoning districts. Some of them are fairly high, like our industrial districts, we pretty much let them fill them up. There's like 90% of the area can be devoted to just impervious. Okay, so I'll, any question, more questions on that? That's, that's the proposal still from the P and Z.
Yeah, and I know they've spent an incredible amount of time on this in the past year. So I'll take a motion to adopt ordinance number 373 and ordinance amending the city of Gaylord zoning code. We have a motion from Eaker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Padilla, any further question or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
So this will be our first reading, so we'll have it back next meeting.
Sounds good. Next is 11B, ordinance number 374, an ordinance amending the city of Gaylord zoning code map.
Yeah, pardon me, but I have another correction here. This is in reference to some rezonings that the council approved last year, but it was in the format of a resolution. Anytime we do any amendments to the zoning map, we're required to do them in the format of an ordinance. So it's just a, we just have to do it in that format. So we need to back up here and prove those properties to be rezoned. They're basically being rezoned from R2 to agricultural. Part of the reason they were being rezoned to that was the solar garden that's down there. And so right now, solar gardens are only permitted in the A1 district. So basically, here we have ordinance 374 to go ahead and do that. The only, of the Mud Lake plat, the only thing remaining that in R2 would be the outlot, which is just has trees and wetland. The only, um, of the Mud Lake plat, the only thing remaining that in R two would be the outlot, um, which is just has trees and wetland. It's basically on the very west end of that down there, west of the solar gardens. And the residents, when they came to the public hearing, they expressed a lot of concern that that potentially could be, um, developed someday as solar as well. And they weren't happy about, um, there would be no longer a buffer. And so as a compromise, the planning and zoning recommended then that we would remain, leave that as R two. And we did not hear of any opposition to that. I'll open up to any questions.
The solar is only on lot two though, right, not lot one?
Right, so.
Because there's three of them there.
There's three lots, yep.
Can we just do the solar garden then?
Well, the, the, the guy that owns the solar garden property, he's got visions to do another one immediately to the east. And then the other property, which would be, again, rezoned agricultural, would be that holding pond that the city owns just south of the shop, public workshop. So for them to be rezoned ag, I mean, they're wetlands right now. That's a close fit, that's as close a fit you're going to get. If somebody came along, I guess, later, later on, well, we would have an issue with spot zoning, I guess, that would be our dilemma. So this is the proposal that came out of the planning and zoning, again, you guys approved it last year, about this time last year.
I guess I'd rather see lot one stay as the R two. I think that's lot one on the east side.
Yeah. If we leave it as R two though, we, we don't have anything else around it that's R two, and that would be considered a spot zone, and spot zoning is illegal in Minnesota. So there's our dilemma. The outlot, again, it's on the west end of that, and it abuts the residential, which is already R two, so we don't have any issue there.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt it. Like you said, we spent a lot of time on this, and had that all figured out already, and this is just a little correction to it or to make sure it's right, so. I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance number three seven four, an ordinance amending the city of Gaylord zoning map.
Motion from Kufal, seconded by Eker, any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next, um, we have eleven B ordinance, or I'm sorry, eleven C, we just did eleven B, uh, Swenson Property Lees, and I will have Steve update us on that.
So this is just a renewal of the existing lease agreement that we've had over the years, um, once, with, uh, Swenson Motors. So this is a one-year lease agreement, again, that's what we've had in the past, uh, the lease is twelve hundred dollars per year.
So we need a motion to approve the property lease agreement with Greg Swenson on behalf of our DBA Swenson Motors.
So move.
A motion from Rose, seconded by Eker, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is, uh, the resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh five, um, amending the twenty twenty-five fee schedule for the city of Gaylord.
Yeah, mistakenly left off the pavilion fees, it was something that we had adopted, the council had adopted later last year, after the fee schedule had been adopted, and I just kind of slipped on remembering that. And then also, there was a sanitary sewer, the base fee hadn't been reflected as changed on the, the resolution that you approved last meeting, so those are the proposed changes.
Looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, amending the twenty twenty-five fee schedule for the city. Motion from Padilla, seconded from E, or by Eker, um, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Eleven E is the school.
And Mayor, I, I, I wanted to, I may, I also wanted to just talk a little bit about the, the fees and for events that we may waive the fees. Uh, last year, we waived the fees for extravaganza as well as meet me under the mistletoe because we basically define them as community events, um, that the chamber puts on. The chamber also has some other events that they're probably going to be looking to utilize a pavilion for in the future. Uh, they've talked about their Easter egg hunt, for example, coming up here this spring, and so they would like to use it for that. So I'm, I'm looking for a little direction here, um, it's, I'm not always clear as far as what I should maybe agree to waive the fees for or not waive the fees for. So if there's some thoughts, suggestions on that, I'd appreciate it.
The chamber does a lot to bring community events to the city, I am fine with waiving the fees for their events.
Especially when they're like city events like the Easter egg.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Because we have them on our, our qualifying group rate, which is half our fee, um, they're listed there, um, but if it's a community event, so to speak.
It's open to everyone, I mean, I, it's a public service to the community.
I, I think like if they were to have a, like a banquet there for the members, and that would be, fall under the. But being it's a community, like you said, that the whole community is invited to participate in, and I think we're good.
What if we have other organizations that want to do the same, you know, that are providing an event that would be open to the community?
Like what?
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, the chamber, I think, is.
Say somebody wanted to use it for a pancake breakfast, say that, I don't think they could do that, but if they catered in something, I guess they could do it that way.
Bring it to council.
Yeah, I feel like the, the chamber is different because it's a, they're doing things on behalf of our city. It's not like it's a nonprofit coming and wanting to fundraise, they're, they're providing an event for the whole community. So I don't know that other groups fit that criteria other than the chamber.
Is there a cleanup fee at all associated with the events after they do it?
Yeah, it's, it's included in our policy that they have to do certain cleanup, so it would be all coming under our damage deposit then, that they have to do all those things, comply with our policy, and then they get their deposit back a hundred percent.
So at least the city's not on the hook for any kind of cleanup.
Well, they must, there still must be some cleanup in there, isn't there, I mean, are.
Yeah, our cleaning person then goes in there, sure, right, yeah, it's, it's not to, to the degree that they're going there cleaning up the floors, they, we sweep and have them clean up any spills, but beyond that, I mean, they have to take out the garbage. Remove everything that they brought into the event.
Like wiping down tables, they probably go.
We're supposed to wipe down the tables, right. Here's, here's another event, prom. Last year, it was the first event that was in the pavilion, we did not charge them a fee. They are looking to hold there again this year, the first Saturday in May.
Doesn't that go under the qualifying group rates? I mean, they do sell tickets for that, for prom, so they make money off of it.
The tickets, just to clarify, the tickets are for the grand march, which is at the high school, this is just the dance, then the kids come here for the dance, so it's just for the students.
So why do they charge for the grand march? What does that money go for?
I don't know, I've been off those committees for a few years.
I guess if, if they're having it at the school, they're charged people that come to the school to see it, then to me, there should be a.
I mean, and the kids pay a fee for to go to prom, but I don't know where that money goes.
Charge at the school is just for like the parents to come in and watch, you know, like obviously here, you know, parents aren't coming to watch, you know.
They charge for everything, they charge for choir concerts, they charge for music.
I know, but this, and, and I get some of that, but the prom, it's like, you're charging the parents to come in and see their kids go to prom, what's that? So that, I, I guess if they're charging over there for that, then there shouldn't be an issue with us charging it.
Yeah, did we waive that fee last year, or did we give it for reuse? I don't remember that.
We had to buy all the tables right before the prom, so they had them all.
I remember that.
I think.
I mean, we're providing.
That three hundred dollars really isn't terrible for them.
Is that the consensus?
I think it'd be cleaner for us to just limit the free usage to the change, city groups and the chamber. And that just blanket makes it easier than we're not in this gray area every time someone else wants to use it.
I agree.
Okay, that helps me.
Because, you know, then the baseball association will want to use it, or basketball association.
Yeah, but if the Islanders want to use it. Or the library wants a whole event, or the fire department wants to host an event there, I, they should not be charged.
Yeah, they're city assets.
Like Jessica said, they can always come in front with the council.
Yep, exactly.
And we're still doing a damage deposit rate though.
Always.
Okay.
Always required, yep.
Okay, anything else on that? Are we good to go? Because you just need consensus, correct?
Yep, that was good.
Now we will move on to eleven E, the school building demolition, financial assistance.
So this, this item comes out of our last building committee meeting, which was held back on, um, January sixteenth, uh, joint meeting between, um, city, uh, representatives. Both Don and Tony were there, and myself, and then the county representatives. And so basically, the county went through and they outlined as far as, gave us an update as far as where they're at, primarily, they spoke a lot about their auction of the properties, and then also their plans to, uh, plat the property. And so they gave us updates on that, and then there was some discussion as well on the demolition, they shared that they're applying for, uh, demolition loan through Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. They are not sure how much they may be awarded, if they're awarded, um, it all comes down to the number of applicants. I believe they had mentioned at the meeting that there was like two million dollars available to this program statewide, and I think a million of that goes towards the grant component of it. There's another, another program similar, uh, but there's a grant component, if you have a developer, then you can apply for a grant. But we don't have a developer, so, I mean, we're looking to demo, they're looking to demo the building, so a loan is their only avenue, it's, it's a decent loan. Um, I think the first three years, um, their interest, interest fee free, and there's no principal or interest payments due those first three years. Plus, if they happen to get a developer, don't quote me on the three, I, it's either two or three, I can't remember. Uh, but anyway, it's, um, if they happen to get a developer, within, I think, the first three years, they, and they have somebody who wants to develop the property, they actually can get half of that loan forgiven. So, um, and it's a fifteen-year payback, or that's the term on the loan. So it's a decent program, but, um, it probably will not get them to where they'd like to be, you know, they, they're figuring nine hundred million dollars to remove the building. And so ultimately, um, the question was asked of us if the city would be willing or able to assist in any way with the demolition cost. Uh, we did not give them any guarantees, obviously, because we have to come back, and they understand that we have to come back to the council for that. So that's why this, this item is on the agenda for tonight, just to start the discussions and see what you guys' thoughts are as far as what you'd like to do.
Remind me again what they told us when we wanted that property that the house was on, because we wanted to develop it.
The house is on?
Didn't we ask?
Well, we, they wanted the utilities waived once before, and we asked for that property in exchange, and they said no.
Well, that's what I thought.
Something like along that line.
Where that house is next to the.
Well, I think it was the two on the south side.
Something like that house.
Some, but we're getting them properties in exchange for waiving utilities, and they didn't want to do that.
Well, I don't think they can right now because of how they auction, if I understand this correctly, the, how the, the auction process works is completely different right now, and the, the, Mayor Lee Peterson has had to spend a lot of time figuring this out. So right now, those lots are not available, they're still owned by the state of Minnesota, they have to go for auction for thirty days, I think it's thirty days for their market value price, and right now, we're in that process, they're listed for auction as we speak. After thirty days, they, they have to be listed for the taxes due on them, and then after a period of time, then it goes to public auction, and then the county can, you know, if the county gets a bidder, that property goes to the bidder. So they have to legally follow this process, so none of those lots can be given away right now, or, or bought by the county right now until they go through, finish this legal process.
Yeah, but I think they told us no before they.
Before that switched, yeah, that was a while ago when we asked that, they said no.
Yeah, the laws have changed a little bit, since all this transpired.
That was before they changed, I think, when we tried to do that deal with them, and they weren't interested.
Steve, are you going to talk to that, your TIF idea for that property at all?
Yeah, I, I can, I can just briefly bring that up a little bit, I did share this information already with the council in an email. But, um, after the meeting, I was talking with John Kozinski, the county administrator, about the possibility that the city could utilize TIF. I didn't know for sure at that time, but I have checked on it, and apparently it is a possibility that we could establish a district, a redevelopment district it would be. And, um, we could then agree to pass the taxes that we collect or the increments, um, onto the county to help them get reimbursed for their cost for demolition. So that is a possibility. The dilemma for us is, TIF is a, is a major tool for us when we're trying to, um, get more development in town here, we've used it a lot over the years, and it's, it's served us well to try to get some housing and, um, business development in our community, so it's, you know, you can't do tax abatement too, you know, you can only do one or the other. So we don't have an option there, if we create a TIF district that we can go use tax abatement later, you can only do one or the other. And so that would be probably the one negative that I can see on this, is that we would be taking away one of our major tools, economic development tools, um, and trying to attract any kind of development on that property.
Wasn't the other drawback the amount of time it would take to get their money back?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, you know, if it's, if they're looking at nine hundred to a million dollars, I, it's hard to envision that they're going to ever get all that back. So part of the dilemma is, okay, a couple of things, so we have to establish the district within three years of the demolition, so we have three years to do that. Then, you know, we don't know who's going to want to develop it, we don't know how many tax, how much taxes or increments would be generated from that development. So there's an unknown there, and we're going to be investing in creating this district, you know, we're looking at probably about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars in financial consultant fees. You know, which we could get reimbursed later ourselves if we get a developer, but if we don't get one, you know, right now, the district, this was a TIF district to begin with, with the medical school, um, the city created a, a TIF district there. Um, under state law, if there's, development doesn't occur within five years of its creation, then it automatically goes away, it has to be decertified, well, that's what, that's what's happened here now. Uh, that, that actually, that five-year period ended last summer, so this year, we'll be looking to decertify that district, so there will be no TIF district on it. So we, it's not like we can utilize what was there before. So this is where we're at, I mean, it is an option, it is an option, um, outside of, you know, the other option would be is to just to, um, make a, a donation or a contribution, I guess, contribution would be a better word, um, towards the project for demoing the property.
I talked to Commissioner Lilienthal today, um, you know, he gave me a brief update, we didn't have a lot of time to talk, but he gave me a brief update from Mayor Lee Peterson, who's been doing a lot of legwork, you know, the county's trying to understand what the TIF district would look like. Of course, everything would be easier if we had a developer interested in the property, I think it would be so beneficial to the county and the city, but we don't have that. I know she did talk to someone from Northland Securities, and they're willing to do a joint meeting with some county and city staff to, um, talk about the, they have a TIF strategist, um, to maybe talk about how, what that would look like and what's realistic. So that might be a good resource for us to use, have something like that. Um, he sent me, Christian sent me some information, I haven't had time to go through it, but I told him after tonight's meeting, I'll, you know, him and I can touch base again, and, um, and after I review all his information, because he had some good information, so. I, it's just a terrible situation, I've said that so many times, and I don't know how else to, if we had a developer, it would be so much easier, how do we attract a developer?
You know, some of the concerns that were brought up too was if they saw that, and somebody buys it super cheap, and they just sit there and hold it, and it just continues to look like it does right now for years on end.
And because of the legal process, that's a possibility, so right now, it's listed for its market value, which I think is, is like.
Twenty-three thousand three hundred.
The whole building?
Yeah, and then it will go to the taxes, you know, after, if no one buys it then, then it goes to the taxes due amount, and then, then it can be listed for a dollar. So we could very well end up with another buyer before the county would even consider taking ownership.
Pardon me, I was, the twenty-three three is for the parcel that they currently have, I don't know what the value on this property.
I thought it was like two hundred and ninety some thousand.
It's going to be like, yeah.
And the taxes. I think that that's the market value price, that the tax is owed, I think, is ninety some thousand. So first, it has to be listed for that two hundred and some thousand dollar price, then it goes to the ninety thousand dollar price, then it goes to the one dollar price, so.
But it's pretty, it's rapid fire once it starts going.
The market value auction is the longest period. After that, the county can set the period for auction, so they could do a week if they wanted to. They could do two weeks, you know, whatever they set for the auction time. So anyways, it's just. Pickle, for lack of better words.
And, you know, I think that if we, we don't have that money, obviously, to do that building ourselves, and I don't even, I don't even know we could, any of ten percent of that cost, it's significant, significant amount of money to tear that building down. But on the other hand, I don't want it to sit there either, cause how many complaints do you get, just how awful it looks, the state that it's in right now.
So actually even discussing this is kind of premature because we don't know what's gonna happen.
We don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know if they're gonna get the loan, but, but I think it's just to get a, a, what.
Put in your mind.
Yeah, just get it in everyone's mind and, and what we, the city can or would be willing to do, like to start forming thoughts.
I think it'd be nice to put the energy into finding a developer. No, cause if you spend, let's just say a hundred thousand, I'd rather spend a hundred thousand to find a developer who's gonna get in than spend a hundred thousand just to have a grass park.
Yeah, but still, if someone comes in and buys it, it's.
That's what I mean. So I mean, if you work to find a developer you can work with, you know, you can get your ground rules, but.
I think that's hard though, cause I, I think the building's gotta go down. If the building's gone, you might find a developer that wants the lot, I don't know, but, um, that, that's our thing too, is what we put in for, if we contribute to the demo. We don't know what's gonna come after that, and then what's other costs that might come back on the city, so it's hard to say. You know, we'll put this much in, and then all of a sudden now, two years later, we gotta put a mon, bunch more in for something with the development.
And when Certus was still involved, we did have discussions with developers, and it, it was, it's just such a big building that the, the cost effectiveness is not there, you know, it may be, I mean, I'm not saying this is what's gonna happen or what I think should happen, but maybe partial demolitions are the, I mean, to start taking down chunks of it, it's, but then you have to board up half of a open-sided building. I mean, I don't know that there's any easy, clear answer with how to deal with this, you know, huge building.
Just to clarify, when I, I mean, a developer after it would be torn down.
Oh, sure.
I mean, obviously that building's been a core already.
No, no, I appreciate that.
But right, as of right now, if someone comes in and buys it, they still owe our utilities. They still owe that on that building.
Right. And that's the other item I wanted to bring up here.
So I guess I wouldn't even want to discuss that until after all this process has gone through. Because if all of a sudden we said, yes, we'll work with that, well then this, somebody could come in and buy it and expect those fees to be dropped.
They could ask.
So I think we should table this until we know what's gonna happen.
Until the auction period's over.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea too, but so we can have a better understanding what's gonna happen with it.
Sure. Okay. So you just need consensus on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I guess, when you say wait till the end of the auction, like all the auctions, so the building is like sold, don't you want to wait till?
Well, there's nothing we can do until they go through all this process. And if we start saying we'll do this and we'll do this, somebody will come in and buy it and expect us to do that.
I, I guess, cause the only reason what was coming out of that meeting is they're, they're looking at a way to try to get this building and remove it, and they're just asking, would the city be willing to help in any way, and if so, with what? And, and then that, that's gonna change how the auction process would go. Cause they have the right to buy it before it goes to that final auction, but if the city's like, we have no interest in, in doing anything, then they're just gonna do what they want, and that's when we could potentially end up with somebody buying that building for a dollar at the third auction when we're stuck.
So what you're saying is the county would like to know if they end up buying it, what we're gonna.
Yes. That's, that's the gist I got out of that last meeting, was they wanna know, and Steve presented that TIF idea, which was one, and then if the city be willing to any, up any kind of money to help with that demolition of that building. Now, am I tracking?
Yeah, I guess so. I, I mean, I, I just simply got the impression that they were looking for any assistance they could get. I mean, they're looking at a big dollar figure here, and.
We have a big dollar figure sitting over there.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
No, and that, that was my understanding too, is they just, for them to move forward, to kind of have an idea of what we're gonna do, not a firm commitment, but just a general idea.
So once it goes to market value, if nobody bids on it, then it goes to the tax.
Taxes owed, price.
And that's, people bid on it at that point, and then the county can start bidding on it at that point, or?
The county can bid on it at any point.
They can bid on it.
Right, they can, they can bid on it. It's just that the starting price or the starting amount is at those certain levels.
Yeah.
Estimating a market value, the back, the back taxes, and then the last one, they could sell it for a dollar, they could start it out as a dollar.
Or they could buy it at that point.
For a dollar.
Well, maybe, like Jessica said, just table it for now and before our next meeting.
And we meet with them again on the thirteenth, is that correct?
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, Thursday.
Yeah, it would be kind of interesting to learn a little bit more where they're at with the building.
They've done a ton of research and, um.
Or even find out what they're willing to, I, I mean, do they have a figure in mind what they're gonna, if they, if it comes down to that, that, uh, is they're gonna wait for a dollar before they would take it, or are they looking at a little higher amount?
I think they're, I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but.
Lower is better.
I mean, the taxes due is ninety thousand or nine, I mean, who wants to pay ninety thousand and then spend a, a million dollars tearing it down, you know?
Part of the, part of the, whatever they pay, just like when they bought the parking lot, they paid, let's say roughly twenty-five thousand for it. Part of those monies had to go to the state then. That's the way it all works now, where they're like, two-thirds of the monies have to go to the state, so they only get to keep one-third of it. So it's not like they're paying themselves, they're paying it also to go out of the county. I think just ask more questions and we'll talk more at the next meeting.
Yeah, they have other issues with other buildings now, with other schools too, that they're concerned about.
Yeah, I mean Henderson, Gibbon, Winthrop. Oh, they're gonna have empty buildings. Green Isle, the school there closed.
So that's, I think that's what's driving it.
Although Green Isle might be owned by their city, I'm not sure. Any other thoughts, or are we gonna move on and see what happens? So next on the agenda is, uh, the Lake Beautification, or Lake Titlow Beautification Committee, we remember resignation. Soraya Palacios also served on that committee, and she resigned. So we need a motion to accept her resignation. We have a motion from Iker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Cufal. Any discussion?
That leaves an opening on that committee then.
Yep, yeah, I wrote about it in the newsletter, just try to start recruiting people, so if you guys know anyone or talk to anyone, feel free to invite them to be on the committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, next is computer and computer-related software subscriptions reimbursement.
Yes, um, to be honest, um, the reason I brought this forward is there was a, um, some of you on the council here have purchased computers recently, and just looking at what the cost was, let me go back to look at our policy or our ordinance on this. And based on what those costs were, I think it might be a good, I, good, um, time to consider upping our fees as far as what we reimburse. Currently, they're at a thousand dollars for reimbursement for computers and a hundred and fifty for computer-related subscriptions. And the last time we did an update on this was in May of twenty twenty-two. And I think back then, it was, as far as the computers, I think it was just raised a couple hundred dollars at that time.
Yeah, it used to be eight hundred, and we raised it to a thousand.
And I think that's when we established then that also that software, we didn't have that up until then.
So you wanna go another couple hundred for each?
Yeah, personally, I wouldn't, I prefer if we didn't have to come back and do this every year or two, I'd rather put it up a little bit so we don't have to.
Like fifteen hundred?
Yeah, I, I, I would be open to that.
And what about this fees? How much is like worth now?
Like a hundred bucks for the office. I don't know if anybody gets anything else.
I don't get anything else.
Would you want to up that too, just in case?
Well, I guess it's up to you guys.
So is this a hundred and fifty just for a year, or is it for the four years?
It's per year.
Per year, okay. Fifteen hundred and.
That's how we've been doing it anyway.
What did you want for the other amount, Steve?
Yeah, the hundred and fifty, it says in the ordinance, one per year. What?
The, the other annual fee, what did you want that to be?
For the, for the software?
Yeah.
You know, I don't have a computer, so I'm, I'm a little at a loss here, cause you, you guys do, and so I don't know what kind of fees you're paying. So if a hundred and fifty is acceptable yet, if it still works, fine, or if you want to bump it up a little bit based on what your experience is.
I think as long as we're doing the computer, you should probably bump it up a little bit if you don't want to come back to it.
Right, and we have to turn and receive, so it's not like, I mean, if we set it at four hundred, but it only costs like a hundred and fifty dollars, like that's all the cities are paying, so. And if the subscription fee goes up, at least then we have room to grow. And I'm not saying it should be four hundred, I just threw that number out there.
Like fifteen hundred and three hundred?
Sure, let's go with it. So we need just a motion to schedule a public hearing for March nineteenth at seven PM.
Yeah, we, as you recall, we don't have a meeting on the fifth, so we'll have to wait till the nineteenth.
Okay. So does anyone want to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for? We have a motion from Iker. Do we have a second? Seconded by Padilla. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any other, anything else? Any closing comments?
Have we gotten anything from RS Fiber at all? Like, what's going on? Cause like, first year's gone by and.
Yeah, I was gonna provide, Jessica and I went to a meeting last week, and I was gonna provide an update in our, my email Friday.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn from Iker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Padilla. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I got.